Welcome to the October 7th, 2024 Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioner, Cemetery Commissioner meeting, 6:30 PM. First order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a matter of record, this meeting is being recorded. First up on the, second up, approval of minutes from September 23rd, 2024. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sigurdnevich. Any questions, concerns, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Citizens comments, anyone wishing to be heard tonight? That's not on the agenda, does not require a vote of the board. Now is your turn. Seeing none. Appointments. Sarah Mongeau, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, ex officio, three-year term to expire, June 30th, 2027. I know Sarah's here, she needs no introduction. She is our town accountant, so it's a good fit for her. Anybody have any questions or concerns for Sarah? Hearing none, what is the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Mr. Sigurdnevich? All in favor, state aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, Sarah. Reappointment. Script is there for Jason Johnson, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, it says ex officio, he is not ex officio, he will be a full voting member as a Board of Selectmen member. One year, a term to expire, one year, June 30th, 2025. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, by Jason Johnson, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, one-year term to expire, June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sigurdnevich, second by Mr. Landry, and just for the record, thank Mr. Johnson for filling this role again another year. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All abstain.
One abstention, 4-0-1. Next up, license and permitting. One day Walt Mine, Walt Wine Malt Liquor License, sorry. Dogfather Vending LLC, October 25th, 2024. 5:30 to 8:30 at Nichols College, 121 Center Road, Dudley, Mass. Is someone here to present on behalf of Nichols, sir?
My name is Robert Ziegellis, and I represent Dogfather Vending. I'm their events coordinator.
So, Mr. Administrator, what do we have here?
So, one year, uh, one year, one-day license, the paperwork has been submitted and is in order and it's up to the Board of Selectmen to approve.
So, can you tell us a little bit about how the setup's gonna be up there, and have you spoken to the local police and fire?
Yeah, we've informed the Board of Selectmen and the Police Department. As we're, we're a 12C license holder. And the suggestions we've gotten from the town administrator was that the police want a fenced-in area for the contain 21-plus years-of-age drinkers.
Okay.
All our servers are tip-certified, so they'll be carding, and it, so you're basically fenced in, if you're not in the fence, you're not consuming alcohol.
They can't take it outside?
No.
Chief?
I did receive all the paperwork from the, the person that's applying for the license. I also spoke with the Public Safety Director, they have hired a police detail for the event, and like I said, like stated, it's gonna be contained as far as the drinking, and I would have no issues with, with all the paperwork and the events for that night.
Oh, he said fire and EMS, you okay with it? Nothing to do with it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, I think we're outside.
Okay, board members' comments, Kerry?
No.
I have a quick question. A couple of the tip certifications that were submitted, it looks like they expire the week before the event, on October 18th, for just two of the members? I was, I didn't know if you were...
They, they won't be serving, that was just a pagehead, everybody that was certified.
Okay, but they won't be serving on the day, okay. Alright, that answers my question.
Mr. Landry?
You said there's gonna be a fenced-in area?
Yes.
Do you know where that is?
It's in the parking lot that they've allotted us.
Okay, you know, chief, you know which parking lot that is?
Uh, no.
And how many entry points are gonna be there?
Uh, entry points for the, serving the liquor?
To get into the controlled area.
One.
So, that's true, that's, I believe it's parking lot A, where they're gonna be holding the event, and then across the street, that's where they're gonna have parking for the visitors. And from what I gather is, like I said, it's gonna be controlled as far as like coming in and out of there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions. Any questions from the crowd? Hearing none, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the one-day wine malt liquor license to Dogfather Vending LLC on October 25th, 2024, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Nichols College, 121 Center Road, Dudley, Mass.
Motion made by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any further questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
One opposed, no abstentions, four, excuse me, 4-1. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully the weather's nice.
Yeah, I hope so too.
Next up, we have an outdoor entertainment permit, Nichols College, Oktoberfest, October 16th, 2024, 4:00 to 7:30. Somebody here to present on behalf of Nichols.
Hi, am I supposed to go up to the table? I've always come.
There you are, whatever you more comfortable with.
Heather Bowes, 18 Mill Street, I'm here for Nichols College, we're looking to get an entertainment permit for October 16th. We're having Oktoberfest on the Copper Beach Quad from 4:00 to 7:30.
So, what, entertainment, you talking band, you talking DJ?
Uh, band, Whiskey Boulevard.
You've had it before, right?
Yeah.
Uh, no alcohol or anything?
Uh, there is alcohol, there'll be a beer fenced-off tent on the quad. We have reached out to the police, and I believe there's gonna be a police, a police detail and public safety.
Chief? Should've kept them up there, sorry.
Uh, I, so this is one of the, another event, I spoke with the Public Safety Director, he has hired a police detail for the event. I believe in the past, we've, we've, we've participated in that event with a police detail, I believe it's between the two coppers, on the lawn area. So again, I would have no issues, they did hire a police detail.
So, are you gonna do like the other guy, segregate the area for the drinking, or is it gonna be?
Yes, only one, 21 to get in.
Same thing, everyone's tip-certified.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Kerry?
No.
Yeah.
No, sir.
Okay, anybody from the car, from the crowd? Hearing none, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to give the outdoor entertainment permit to Nichols College for Oktoberfest, October 16th, 2024, from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the area they designated.
Motion made by Mr. Landry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shains. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
4-1. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hope the weather holds for you all. Public business, Sarah White from Hands, helping address the needs of Dudley seniors. She has a public update for us. Always nice to see Sarah.
Yes, Sarah White, resident of Dudley, founder of Hands. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to come and provide an update. It's been a while since I've been here. First, what I would, I would like to thank our original board members who have stepped down in the last couple of years. They being David Gould, who I believe at one time sat on the Finance Committee in Dudley. Former Chief of Police Steve Weiner, and former Selectman Paul Joseph. I deeply appreciate all the time and dedication they gave to Hands, they were fundamental in the nascent years, helping Hands become the success it is now. I would also like to welcome Steve Sullivan, is our newest board member, he's been on the board for over a year now, but he's a great addition to the board. We have a new look, applications are out around town, but I want people to be aware that we have a new logo, so don't be confused by that. The applications are available currently at the post office, at the Pearl Crawford Library, and at several locations here in the Town Hall, on the second floor and down in the Senior Center. So, if you are in need, please do come and pick up a Hands application. We've also this year added water utility as one of the options for assistance. And I also want people to know that there, if they qualify and are awarded a grant, all the money does not have to go to one entity. So if they want help with their heating and their water, we can split it up, we'll just need to know that on the application. So, and that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Oh, and donations are always accepted.
I was gonna say that.
Please feel free to mail them in at PO Box 343, Dudley, Mass. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah? Anybody in the public?
Thank you.
Keep up the missions, Sarah, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Next, Dudley PTO, Heather Bowes, request permission to hold the annual Dudley PTO Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day, November 28th, 2024, at the Dudley Beach and nearby roads. Doesn't have a time in this, Heather, so can you give the time?
Uh, starts at 8 o'clock on Thanksgiving morning.
Perfect.
We start to set up at about 7:00.
What's that?
We start to set up at about 7:00.
Yeah.
Um, so it's the 11th Turkey Trot, starts at 7:00, we set up at 7:00, starts at 8:00, we're usually wrapped up by 9:15, 9:30, and on our way. We know this year's the football game, we'll tell people to be careful of any traffic, we haven't had any issues in the past.
So, where can people go if they want to sign up?
Um, there's a Facebook page, and there will be an event page for it, we usually put flyers at the library, we usually drop some off here. There's, there'll be one posted at Dip and Donuts, it's on the Dudley PTO Facebook page.
Is there a separate page for the Turkey Trot, or right through the PTO?
There is one, a separate one for the Turkey Trot too. They can reach out to me.
Through Facebook?
Through Facebook.
Whatever.
My phone number. It's usually posted out on the board, out in front of the Town Hall as well, and the schools, I'll have information.
Excellent. Any questions for Heather? Yes?
It's 11 years, that's awesome. It's always a great event.
It's pretty good. I see you guys are out hiking stuff, you should be there this year.
Hiking's a lot slower than running.
You can walk, with plenty of walkers.
You could take your car.
Yeah, you can do the, you can do the, do the turkey, just baby steps.
Right?
Anybody in the crowd have any questions for Heather? Hearing none, what's the board's pleasure? Mr. Johnson?
Uh, make a motion to grant permission to the Dudley PTO to hold the Dudley PTO Turkey Trot Thanksgiving Day, November 28th, 2024, at the Dudley Beach and nearby roads.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Sigurdnevich, any further questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck, hope the weather holds.
Thank you.
Next up on the 7C, Board of Selectmen, vote. I guess it's to approve the layout of St. Anthony's Road. Just as an aside, Mr. Administrator, this is another one of our roads right there, we did through the Betterment process?
That's correct, you voted the Betterment order, tonight's the layout, and it's on for acceptance at the town meeting on October 21st.
Excellent.
And we have the documents here for the inspection, for the selection, for the vote.
So, do we, do we, I'm gonna ask this highway superintendent, MJ Gasky, do we handle this like a regular acceptance, is the board supposed to vote, actually walk it before the meeting? Cause we usually do that for a regular acceptance, just to check it out, make sure, you know?
We generally delegated that to Highway and Planning, and I believe they've
They've all done it?
They've all done that and recommended that it's all set and ready to go.
Alright, I just recommend anybody on the board that wants to go check it out, take a ride out there.
Alright.
Wasn't a very big layout, right? What a long, linear feet, right?
This will also be a attachment, a county warrant, so people can see it posted.
MJ, I've seen, you know how long that is, about? 600 feet? Good. Good, Kerry?
Does that have a turn?
Yeah, I'm good. Chief, you good with that? Alright, chief, there's no, no turn radius on the end, but that's the way it was laid out back in the day, right?
We put a turnaround, we put like a pull-out.
Oh, there is? Okay, just didn't show up. Well, you know, just again for the record, that's a Betterment project bylaw, we put in, what, three years ago maybe? That's a, that third road that we've, Tobin, Patrick Hill, St. Anthony.
St. Anthony.
So, kudos to the administrator, when he, he's the one who brought that forward.
Tobin is still pending, right?
Yeah, but it's
Yes, yeah.
What's the board's pleasure? Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the layout of St. Anthony's Road.
Motion by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shains. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good job, everybody involved with that. 7D, Board of Selectmen to vote to approve the election warrant, presidential election, November 5th, 2024, Mr. Ruder.
I'm gonna send around a copy of the election warrant for the Board to inspect and approve for us to hold our presidential election.
Excellent.
Requires Board of Selectmen assent in order to put it out there for people to vote on for the next president.
That, that's, that's the only thing on there, right? No.
There's an initiative petition.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'll pass it around.
Office-wise, there's no no down ballot, right?
There's Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court. We had an interim election.
I meant, I said, no.
Correct.
No, I knew that.
Nothing local.
Right, I should've said local, sorry.
So, we have to sign all of them.
Okay. You sign it?
Up there, be ready, after a vote.
Anybody have any comments on the ballot? Questions or concerns from the public? Hearing none, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, or?
Aye.
Unanimous. Last page.
The last page, yeah.
Chief. Give a quick second, folks.
I always put my extra.
Mr. Chairman, while you're signing, I just forgot to mention that the road layout of St. Anthony's, it will be available for inspection in the town clerk's office, for anybody who wants to see it. For at least seven days, we'll bring it down there tomorrow. 7D stays a calendar day. Probably be more like 14 days, no?
7E, Board of Selectmen to take final action, if required, relative to the October 21st, 2024 special town meeting warrant, Mr. Ruder.
Mr. Chairman, we voted that, signed it, and I posted it today at the last meeting, so that was just the, this was the very absolute last second for us to vote for it, it's already been voted, we're all set, and posted.
Excellent. Number eight, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, with agreement from the Board of Selectmen, the town would like to set trick-or-treat this year for October 31st, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And that's also based on the police chief's recommendation.
Any questions on trick-or-treat?
Okay, so we don't have any more televised meetings between tonight and the special, which we've had so many meetings back-to-back, weeks to, week to week, that it seems like there's gonna be a big lapse in between. So I'm just gonna set a few reminders, they're all posted everywhere, but we won't have another chance to talk about it, so. The town meeting is scheduled for 7:00 PM in the auditorium at Shepherd Hill. The Board of Selectmen meeting will be at 6:30, immediately preceding that. By way of reminder, the town's annual Spooktacular will be October 24th, 2024. The Children's Parade will be kicking off at 4:00 PM from the Pearl Oak Crawford Memorial Library, ending at the Town Hall for Games, Streets, and more. The event is being organized by the Recreation Commission. I believe they met tonight. So I don't know if there's anything to be added to that. And then finally, I'm, we've met a few times in the past few weeks, so there's not a lot to talk about tonight, but I did want to take this opportunity to talk, Mr. Chairman, it seems like there's been some misunderstanding, or maybe some information maybe lacking when it comes to my availability to meet with residents. And, you know, this may have been the case with recent discussions, particularly surrounding the citizen petitions. I think there were a lot of questions that could have been answered in advance of the public meeting, and there were a lot of perspectives that could have been added, had I been involved in the process. And I think it was a missed opportunity to be collaborative rather than, you know, tending to be a little bit combative during those discussions. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to publicly let residents know that at any time, if they feel they need to talk to me about something, anything, ask my opinion on a matter, ask for clarification, or voice a concern, there are multiple ways to do it. They can call the office at 508-949-8001, and if I'm not immediately available, perhaps Olivia or Amanda can get, get them the help they're asking for. If they can, or if they prefer to speak with me, then they can go ahead and leave me a message, and I'm happy to call them back. And I make an effort to call back anybody who wants to talk to me, there's never been an issue with that. If they prefer to see me in person, I can't guarantee that I'll always be available, but we can certainly make arrangements to have an appointment, we can do a conference call, we could do a Zoom call. Every Friday, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I make an effort to clear my schedule from 10:00 to 12:00, to kind of catch up with the things that I couldn't get done during the week. So I'm relatively available during that timeframe, if somebody wants to come to the counter and hope to talk to me, or try to talk to me, that's the best time to do it. Fridays between 10:00 and 12:00. I guess my point is that if I don't know there's a question that a resident has, I can't answer it, and if I'm not asked about the latest rumor or hearsay, I can't dispel it or respond to it, and if I don't know there's a concern, if nobody brings me the concern, it's very difficult for me to address it. So, I, I want to make every, take every opportunity that I have to try to avoid some of the contention that we had the last previous two meetings, particularly when we're talking about those citizen petitions. I think there are a lot of things that were brought up that probably were not appropriate to be done on camera, spoken about publicly, but maybe had we had some discussions in advance, had I had the opportunity to speak with the petitioners, we could have made that a little bit more of a productive meeting, so. I'm just putting out there, I'm gonna work with, with Devil Placata, put my availability, help make it more apparent and obvious to people that I'm here 40-plus hours a week, and I'm willing to meet with them. I can't, I can't guarantee that they can walk in and get me immediately, but they can get me, so if they make the, if they want to speak to me, come see me, and I'm happy to make an arrangement to do that. That's about it. That's about it for my year report.
You know, I also want to emphasize to the public, and I'll just use for example, cause they're here. If you have a public safety question, and again, I'm, I'm not speaking for the chiefs, I don't know their availability, but if you have a question about law enforcement, start with law enforcement. If you're not comfortable reaching out directly to the chief or the lieutenant, please approach one of the members of the board, we'll bring you concern. I, I talked to the chief today about a lady had a dog issue. Just try, try to get your answers from the right source. You know, Highway Superintendent, designated MJ is very, very approachable. If you got a question, I know if he's not there, they have an answering machine. If you don't get satisfaction, you can always bring it up, bring it up a level, but even when Jonathan was a selectman, he's always had the open-door policy, and again, he can't guarantee he can meet you in person every minute of the day, but reach out, you know, again, if you have, if you have an issue, you're not comfortable talking, I'm the chairperson, I'm not in the phone book, I don't do social media, but other board members are very active, so just, please, we, we encourage participation. I really, I honestly think in the last year, we've had more positive, Kerry was chair, interaction with the public, when they come, we try to get them an answer, if we don't have it, they always get it. So communication is a two-way street. If we don't know there's a problem, we're not gonna be able to help you solve it. So just try to, we keep, we try to keep it civil. You know, it did get a little heated at that previous meeting because, for whatever reason, but I think it was generally productive. So just, again, just kinda follow, follow the road, the roadmap. There's plenty of avenues you can jump. Like you don't call the selectman about your tax bill, for example, we have a tax collector, treasurer. You know, can't call me about speeding, we have a police chief. You can bring it to my attention, and I'll bring it to the chief's attention, but keep it civil, and we'll get through it. Any board member comments?
Mr. Chairman, there've been several times where I've been in the town hall and residents have come in and they wanted to speak with not only the town administrator, the citizen town administrator, but also with the Board of Selectmen. And I happen to be here at the time to speak to them. So I don't want people thinking that they're not gonna be listened to, they're not gonna be heard, they're gonna be ignored. We're here, we'll talk to you as well, and, and we'll take whatever the issue or problem or the good news, the positive they bring as well, and we'll pass it on to the TA, TA's office and the rest of the board.
Absolutely. Mr. Johnson? Kind of a short report, but we'll do a motion to accept the Town Administrator's report.
Second.
Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Landry. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Four zero. Departmental Communications, Town Accountant, Sarah would like to go first. You're the closest, so.
Over the course of the past few days, working days, I've had the opportunity to work with our regional representative on filing for the free cash, and as of this afternoon, everything's been submitted to the regional director. So hopefully, within a few days, we'll have a final number for the free cash. But all the questions have been answered, they do a pretty good job vetting. And we're also working with Rich and John to get the Harper's payroll automated, so we'll be focusing in on that, as well as I'm gonna be catching up the books for July and August, so that we're closing on a more timely basis.
Excellent. Any questions on the Town Accountant?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Gasky.
We got a new streetlight outage that we can do on the town website, so if you get a streetlight reported on that. We just finished up some paving on Northwest Schoolhouse and Dr. Silver Road Number Two, so we're just trying to button that up on the sides of the road, put some grass seed down and stuff, so just, if you're out there, just slow down, and we are working on the side of the roads out there.
I was out there today trying to get cut through.
Yeah, National Grid's still working on, they saw Bridge, and we're working, it's kinda been a traffic.
Was coming back from South Bridge, and they actually...
Detour you.
All the way back out to, what's that, 169 or...
Yeah, wow, 131, yeah.
131, and I had to go all the way back out to go back up to get home.
Yeah, National Grid's been out there, right at West Lee Road area, so.
Yeah, that's where they sent me down Paper Mill.
That's what a few people said, so.
It was crazy.
Glad you got here.
Yeah. Thank you, I'm glad. Fire Chief, EMS Director.
Good evening. I just wanted to let the board know, we started Citizens Fire Academy last Wednesday. I think it was pretty well-received. I think it's gonna be a good program. We got a lot of stuff lined up for the students. We got an old car, we're gonna let them cut it up if they want, among other things. We're gonna let them do a lot of practical things. Just like I told the students, we have five of them. It's all what they wanna put into it, they can just observe, or they can get as involved as they want, but I think it's gonna turn out good. It was good in 2016, and I think this one will be even better. Also, this is Fire Prevention Week. Deputy Kenechny and Lieutenant Benoin will be in the Mason Road School and the Elementary School all week, teaching our annual fire prevention and fire safety to the elementary students. And Mason Road does come to our station one day this week, I believe it's Wednesday, so other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions with the chief? Thanks, chief. Chief Colowits.
Just real quick, two weeks ago, we received notice that we were granted $20,000 for the upcoming municipal road safety grant. That grant covers equipment towards traffic enforcement and also to pay for extra patrols. We asked for 20, we got 20, so we got the full amount. And also, over the last couple of days, we received some reports of political signs being stolen from people's property. Regardless of what party you're in, regardless of whoever you're gonna vote for, please respect everybody's opinions. If we do find out who is stealing the signs, we're gonna go after you to the fullest of the law. It's, voting is a, is a right in this country, and I believe that, you know, by showing who you're supporting, respect your neighbors, respect your neighborhoods by leaving their signs alone. And I hope that this was the end of any more of this. That's about it.
Chief, what do people do if someone puts a sign, like on a veteran's memorial or town property where they're not allowed? I usually reach out to the highway superintendent, he always has his guys pick him up. I see him a lot of times at...
That's a tricky one. I, I've gone through a lot of trainings in the last couple of weeks, and we were told as the police department, we shouldn't be involved in any political signage on town property. So ultimately, I think that falls on the Board of Selectmen as far as what's allowed, what's not allowed, as long as it's not interfering with traffic. So I'll leave it at that.
I'll tell you right now, I pick them up if they're out there, so. Go by Dudley Oxford Road, and I see one that's going for a ride.
Mr. Chairman, we can publicize a reminder about putting up signs on, you know, veteran memorial squares and that sort of thing. It's disrespectful, and it's not, I believe we have a bylaw in place.
We definitely do. And even the Yadseel signs we see.
Those are, I believe the, we're talking, we're gearing towards the political signs, only 'cause if you allow one, you gotta allow them all, regardless of your political views, whether you're supporting one, something that's going around the world. If you don't support one, then you're showing favoritism, so I would discourage from the town allowing political signs on town property.
Right, I agree. Any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Treasurer Collector. Mr. Camagnani.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, they do find the tax collector, every complaint usually seems to come to the office, but for those offices that do get a question on a tax bill, I appreciate them sort of directing people to the office, as we try to do. Start with the easy ones. Town clerks had a lot of mailings lately. Communication's been very good, it's not, we have a four o'clock pickup for a whole bunch of ballots, let's get them started at 3:53. So I need to thank Lori and Jackie for sort of their increased communication, that we know what's going out. Personally, I think it's a good thing, get as many people voting in the election, doesn't matter what side, you want the most people voting, but that's, that's just me. In addition to sending out ballots, there's a whole bunch of pink notices that have gone out. We're buttoning up unpaid real estate, so we're seeing a few unhappy people. Remember, your tax bill is your tax bill, and if the financial institution that you've entrusted to pay it completely has not, it's not the town of Dudley, we're extending the courtesy before perfecting the lien which creates a tax title. Won't go off onto a digression onto tax title, but I will circle back to unpaid water and sewer. Now is the time of year when you see that final water and sewer bill, for anything that was unpaid in fiscal '24 will be leaned as part of your third-quarter real estate. So anybody who might be having a bit of an issue, or hadn't checked it, or thought their significant other had taken, taken care of it, you wanna get those things paid before they're placed as a lien or rider on the, on the real estate. Remember, the Board of Selectmen is voting a supplemental budget. A week, two weeks, three weeks later, they will host the Board of Assessors for the rate hearing. It will be at that point that you will have a tax rate on the new valuations, and you will know what you will plan to pay in February and May of 2025. Always like to end with this, there's a whole bunch of people who leave Dudley, I don't know why, and go down to Florida or warmer locations, and I usually get the, Richard, if I call you, will you give me the amount? Absolutely. I appreciate that everybody's got a mail forwarding. Most people have advanced to the point where you have access through the Unipay portal, which is going to show you what's outstanding. So if you're coming back after, let's say, Valentine's Day or St. Patrick's Day, you might have a bill that's due or passed due, and extend it. If I can extend a little courtesy to you or take a few minutes on the phone, I'd be happy to field it. A bunch of people do send the emails out. I make it a point not to really email bills and that. An exercise bill has enough personal identifiers on it, that in the event your email gets hacked, we don't want that personal information going somewhere. If you can identify yourself, I'd be happy to share what's outstanding, and I usually get the little notes and everything. So I appreciate, it's sort of a two-pronged approach, people who are traveling, making sure that things are done, and we'll extend a little bit of extra as far as, as far as that goes. Hate to end on a, on a sort of a down note, but your Medicare is going to go up for about 15% coming up for the January 1st enrollment. We set the Medicare rates for a 1-1 renewal because the federal government, they were a little late this year, setting what they believe to be the increases. We went through, we were able to mitigate what the federal increase was, down to 15%. So the town's roughly going to save 8% against what, what the underwriting said the trust should be paying. So for the last few years, you have been paying less than market value for your health insurance, and they've cannibalized the trust and the revenues from the trust. The trust was set up for a three-month runout, we're very close to that, but every year's savings seems to eat in a little bit on it. We've probably cannibalized over $10 million in the past few years. I won't speak out of turn because you have a director of the trust who will be able to explain everything that's done, but at the end of the day, we're still buying health insurance with attractive copays, minimum annual deductibles, and we're still paying less than market for it. So things are working with that group. There's any questions on the health insurance? Medicare is not gonna affect anybody here, though everybody knows if you're 65 and you're still working, you need to be part of Medicare A, and then you effectuate B when you retire, part of the savings. Appreciate everybody's time. Again, if there's a question on a real estate tax bill or what have you, please let us know. Again, if there's a pink bill, we, we've sent it because we need to get an action taken. Happy to work with people on that. And I know you don't have a meeting coming up. If the Board, the Finance Committee, Capital Improvement, if there is a question that comes up ahead of the meeting, and we can provide some veteran information to whoever's looking for it, and of course, we'd share it to the other boards, please, my office is a resource, happy to, happy to share. Thank you.
Questions with the Treasurer Collector? Good. Thanks, Rich. Board member comments? Mr. Johnson?
I was thinking about, anyone has friends or family down south, another storm coming through. Keep in touch with them.
Still ain't there?
Yes, also, for people just to be aware, more than usual, when you're driving around town, I know that public safety's been pretty busy lately, and, well, they're always busy, but it seems to be, I hear them and see them a lot more now. Then you have the children, a lot of families getting the good weather, going out for walks, bike rides. Be careful, watch out for them, 'cause not all of them on bikes are following the rules they're supposed to follow. So just be careful. Go slow, be courteous kind, try not to lose your cool, and I wanna thank everybody for doing a great job, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mrs. Shanes?
We talked a little bit tonight in various areas about things that are coming up. Those aren't just great activities to, like, bring your kids to and enjoy yourself, but I know that Recreation Commission most likely is going to be looking for volunteers for that Spooktacular. If you're interested in that, like, reach out to the commission. I hate to speak on their behalf, but, you know, it's, Janet mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, so I just wanted to kinda circle back. Yeah, and, and other things that go on, anytime there's an event happening, most of the time, those groups are also looking for people to pitch in. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Mr. Siggenhavich?
I think I'm good today, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna echo what everybody said. I actually spent some time down in Florida earlier this year, right where the epicenter of that storm hit, and I saw pictures of places that we were able to shop at and frequent that were absolutely destroyed. Another one coming, hope they're all safe. Jana hit the nail right on the head, Spooktacular is one of our big, family, fun, community-oriented events, and if you have some time to donate, whether it's putting the little treats in the bags that they give to the kids, or handing them out, or whatever it is, I don't think they'll turn anybody away. And it's a long weekend coming up, and as Mr. Landry said, people will be out there walking and biking, and just keep your head on a swivel and keep everybody safe. So next up, we have an executive session, adjournment to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, SEIU 888. Town administrator may, may not reconvene in open session. The only reason why we would reconvene if it was necessary to conduct a vote, we'll consider the end of executive session, the ending of our meeting, otherwise. Roll call, vote.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jana DeShane, aye.
Jay Johnson?
Kerry Siggenhavich?
Steven Sullivan, aye. Let the first two people...
Mr. Chairman, was there a motion in a second?
Let the first two people that roll call, they can be the motion in a second.
Okay, second.
Oh, you said that?
No.
Oh, I was gonna say.